Okay. It's now 6:32, so we will call the meeting, the special meeting to order. And Mary Beth, you can do the roll call, but if you want to announce why we're virtual.
Yes. So due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Urbendale School Board is meeting virtually in this open meeting, and we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote now. Hauser.
Here.
Downs.
Here.
Ashley Anderson.
Here.
Rihanna Sarah Geiser.
Here.
Mark Smith.
Here.
Sarah Schmitz. Stacy Anderson.
Here.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
So moved. Downs.
Second, Smith.
All in favor?
Right.
Aye.
The whole same sign. Okay, unanimous. Now we are at the point in the agenda where we ask for communication from the public. To my knowledge, we have two people who would like to speak with us. Mary Beth, you wanted to pick one of those names?
Yes, hold on just. Matt Nizzi. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly.
So Matt, when you come online, if you could give us your name and your address, and then go ahead and tell us what you'd like us to hear.
Sure. My name is Matt Nizzi, and I live at 7313 Prairie Avenue. I have a son who started at Rolling Green as a kindergartner this year. I would like to thank everyone on this call and the school district for their thoughtful planning and the preparation for the 2021 school year. I fully appreciate the position the Urbendale School District has been put in regarding mandates from the state and the recommendations from the Polk County Health Department. I am also fully aware the district was denied permission to continue with the continuous remote learning model today. I'm sure many options have been discussed as to whether the district should proceed forward with the hybrid model or continue with the continuous remote learning model. I would like to offer another. I would like the board to consider the option to keep rolling green in the continuous learning model until the rest of the Urbendale schools start. In my mind, the district would just be simply ignoring the state's mandate for a short amount of time. If the board doesn't believe we're ready to have kids return to school just yet, this would allow us to see how the virus spread is going across the state and allow more time to prepare teachers, school buildings, and supporting staff for the changes. It would also, it would go along with the original plan and minimally go against the mandate while not affecting the official school year. After all, it is one school we are talking about. It just happened to start before the rest of the schools during a unique time in a global pandemic where a potentially deadly virus is spreading. I can't possibly see any public backlash for deciding to ignore the state mandate for a couple of more weeks before the regular school year starts. I'm also not sure the state would have a timely reaction to such a decision before the school year would start. In essence, they would probably do nothing. This is only my opinion, though. I am not going to pretend to know the full extent of the consequences for making such a decision, but it might take some pressure off from feeling rushed into a model the group isn't quite comfortable with yet. With such hard decisions to make, I understand this is a tough call. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm done.
Thank you. Sarah.
Next.
Okay. I'll, I'll text you.
The next person for public comment, would you like me to introduce them, Catherine?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Jill Nice.
Yes, I am Jill Nice. I live at 3929 82nd Street in Urbendale. I have four children in the district, and we have been at Urbendale for seven years now. My youngest just started second grade at Rolling Green. I have three Rolling Green alums that are now in seventh grade and two in 10th grade. And I want to thank you guys for all of your hard work. Sorry, I'm getting, there we go. I want to thank you guys for all your hard work. I've been sitting in on these meetings since the middle of June, and I just want to thank everybody for their hard work, and that includes the staff at Rolling Green. They have done a tremendous job changing things every single day as I've been sitting with my second grader most of this time as he's doing his remote learning. I feel confident after sitting in all these meetings that you guys have the best interest of all our students and faculty and staff in mind, but I wonder, like the previous speaker, what the best choice is. I'm concerned about the unintended consequences of defying the order that were mentioned from the UEN lobbyist last week's meeting, but I also wanted to kind of suggest maybe we defy the order for the next couple of weeks as Rolling Green is the only building in session and see if possibly the state recommendations change to better align with the Polk County Public Health Department and the CDC guidelines of 5%. That is what I have tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I should mention, I think our staff is working on it, but it seems like the meeting's at capacity, and our other board member is trying to get on. So Sarah is here. She's just trying to get on, but we're at capacity.
Yes. Are you in? Okay, Dina.
Yes, Catherine.
Can, can you get Sarah in any way?
Yes. Can Sarah try again? So right now, we're fortunately still able to admit people right now, so if she can give it another shot.
Yep, she's tried three, I'm gonna tell her.
Okay. I'm watching for her.
Try it again. She's gonna let you in. Okay, bye-bye. So she's sending it in right now, Dina?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Sorry. Okay. So we will move into the first action item. Which is the, yes.
I wasn't sure. We do have Miriam Benhinkulam from Allers here. I wasn't sure what her timeline was as far as reading to the end or go to.
Actually, we have more public feedback. Olivia is, her hand is raised.
Okay.
Hi, I'm so sorry. Okay, I'm Olivia Kruger, and I live at 4134 Patricia Drive. Good evening, board. About one month ago, I addressed you about Rolling Green's instructional model and how we should be in the classroom. I want to give you a look in the day of my school life. My day starts at 9:00 AM and with the meeting. A lot of the time, it is quite interesting because people often forget the rules, which makes it very distracting as I cannot hear the teacher. After that, there is one hour of math, and there's only one assignment. It takes me 20 minutes to get it done, and for the next 20 minutes, I play educational games on my computer. Today, we had music, and at one point, I had 58 chat comments unread, and one of them said hamburger, nothing to do with what music has. Not to mention all the technical difficulties, and there's 20 different links on Google Classroom and Docs, and the links don't always work. And from, people fade in and out all the time, and the computer gets glitchy. Today, we were talking about masks. A girl put one on and was forced to take it off. My brother, who is in second grade, was in tears because he could not get his link to work, and then the teacher got kind of mad because they were already 10 minutes late on their schedule. I have talked to friends and other classmates, and they, and all they want is to get into the classroom to see their friends. As a student, I know my opinion is not always taken seriously, but I want you to think and remember this. I am doing this for the greater good of my community, my class, and the people of Urbendale, Johnston, Waupiah, the private schools, they are doing this for the greater good. Why can't we? We need to stand up and act, so please, let's do this together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Was Sarah able to get in? I see we have 300 participants, and I'm getting text messages from community members that it's maxed out, so I just want to verify Sarah's here.
She is not here.
I would feel uncomfortable voting without Sarah here just because I know she has, she's making her best efforts to get in.
Hey Catherine.
Mm-hmm.
So.
She can't get in.
Okay. So we have.
This is Boris Bachman. I'm an Urbendale resident. If you need people to leave so that members can get in, could you let us know?
Sure Boris, thank you.
Catherine, a suggestion might be to just put her on speakerphone and have, you have her with you, and she's able to talk, and you can hear her?
I think Dina's got her. So before we get into the action item, Sarah, can you just let us know when you're in?
She says she's on, Catherine.
Okay. Okay, welcome, Sarah.
Thank you. That was an ordeal. But I'm glad so many people have joined tonight. That's fantastic.
Okay, so I'm going to bring forward the Rolling Green instructional model revision, and I'm gonna open it for questions and discussion. We do obviously have Krista and Lauren here, and Steve, and I don't know who else, probably nearly everyone that's signed it, so. Do anyone want to open the discussion?
Do you want me to give just a brief recap, Catherine? This is.
Absolutely, go for it.
Okay, Dina, would you let me share my screen, please? Just so I can pull the agenda item up for those that maybe aren't looking directly at it.
Yes, absolutely. Just one second.
Thank you.
Just a second, Krista.
Not a problem. So while Dina's working on that, I will go ahead and start talking. So as you know, we reached out to the Department of Education on Thursday after the metrics were released by the governor in her press conference and requested permission to be able to continue Rolling Green in an online-only environment. I know Lauren had a meeting with the Mr. DeCryff, our Human Resources Director, who's been one of the three liaisons to the Polk County Department of Public Health, met with them on Thursday afternoon, and I'll let him recap that conversation for you. But really, in effect, nothing had changed with respect to community spread and where we're at with the virus counts that were in place a couple of weeks ago when we first recommended starting Rolling Green online. So on Friday afternoon at around 4:45, we received an email confirmation from the Department of Ed in the form of a letter signed by Director Lebo that our permission was denied, and I see that I can share now, so thank you, Dina. I'll pull that up. And so really, that left us in a bit of a quandary. So as license holders with the Iowa Department or Board of Educational Examiners, you know, we're bound by their code of ethics, and Chapter 25 talks about that code of ethics and said that, you know, licensees are required to abide by all federal, state, and local laws that are applicable to the fulfillment of professional obligations. And Governor Reynolds' metrics and interpretation of Senate File 2310, which was voted into the law just shortly before the legislature disbanded for the session, is, is law. So we didn't feel like ethically we could make a recommendation of our board to go against state law. However, I think morally, we're all feeling that it's, it's really not right to think that students could be in school on Friday in a building with what we know about community spread. So this was actually written just before, it was written before we received the official word that we were denied permission, and we talked about, you know, potentially canceling school on Friday or canceling classes or doing a little more asynchronous learning to give our staff some time to get into the building, you know, and maybe potentially going into a hybrid on Monday. But again, I'll just go back to morally, we're just not real sure that even Monday would give us that much more time. So it's, it's a pretty uncomfortable position to be in. Really never thought that we would be educators in this sort of a position, but that's what we are bringing forth to our school board tonight, because I know that this is also an incredibly difficult position for you all to be in. And with that, I would just walk through a couple of the documents that are included in this recommendation or this, this agenda item. So this graph right here, and I apologize, it's gonna come up, it's gonna come up a little skewed. This is a new graph that the Polk County Department of Public Health is putting on their website that shows us daily count of the percent positive, which was one of the metrics released on Thursday, as well as that rolling 14-day average as of this afternoon. That was updated to include data through Thursday, July 20th, so I included in there just as a reference, because this is now available on the Polk County Department of Public Health's website. Also included in here are some documents that were shared with us as a part of the governor's initial press conference or initial outline of the new hybrid models and things like that. Yeah, so with that, I think I would turn it over to Lauren to maybe recap the, after the meeting with the Polk County Department of Public Health on Thursday afternoon after the governor's press conference.
And then after that, can we have Miriam?
Yes.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, real quickly, the, you know, I want to be, I want to make sure that we're really clear about the, how we're working with them. They've, they are providing us with information and providing guidance to districts in regards to both mitigation strategies and just overall to community spread as it relates to CDC guidelines and what is happening in the state. And kind of going back to the initial collaboration with them, their, their guidance has not changed. And, and one of the examples that they've used with us, which I think is a good analogy, is similar to what the National Weather Service does with schools when there's inclement weather. They give the best information they have, they give the best guidance they have, and then a district makes a decision. And that is very similar in this regard to what they're providing with us is information that they have regarding COVID-19 in the community, but then ultimately, you know, it's the district's decision-making as to how we take that information and make decisions. So just wanted to share that based on the latest collaboration that we've had with them, that that guidance has remained in a similar place based on the, the different metrics that they had initially put forth about the, the, just the trending of cases in the state and then other metrics that they look at as criteria for how they give that guidance. So that's where they are right now, which, like I said, remains unchanged really from the initial guidance that we had received for Rolling Green before they got started.
Yeah, and I think, as I remember, when we discussed baseball and softball, that kind of was the beginning of trying to get some help with Polk County.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, one of the things that they've, they've really been actively participating with us on is the contact tracing that's gone along with the activities that have been going on. So there, we consult with them, and we'll continue to do so for when we get started. There's a, there's a whole process that takes place in terms of investigating positive cases and then how to move forward with that, when that, if and when that happens.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. Miriam?
Hi.
Hi Sarah.
I think I'm, I think my video is hidden, but that's okay. I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Uh-huh.
Okay, great. So I'm with Allers and Cooney Law Firm. We're counsel for Urbendale School District, and it is, my understanding, you were wanting a little bit of input on what potential ramifications could be if the board decided to disregard the letter from the DE from last week and remain in remote learning. Obviously, this situation is very fluid, and I think we're learning as we go what potential authority the DE might have to, to penalize the district, and whether they would exercise that authority is all very speculative at this point. Sort of the most likely outcome that we've identified is the possibility that they might require you to make up some portion of instruction that they deem to be, you know, sort of inadequate because it was remote without having the DE's consent. If they're asserting that they have the authority to give you permission to go remote, then they may, may say that if they denied that permission, that you would have to make up some of those days later on in the year. You know, anything beyond that is really purely speculative at, at this point in time, and I think it would defer any discussion of strategy of what the board's options may be to a closed session where we could kind of hash that out in a little bit more detail as it would be a, you know, attorney-client privileged communication as part of the, you know, sort of the discussion of what the board may do. But the, the very, you know, the, the most likely outcome that we could see would be the DE potentially asserting that they have the authority to order additional hours or days of contact time to make up for time that you're in virtual. And I don't know that that would be one for one based on the governor's proclamation that the learning has to be 50% in, in person. That may not be, you know, a, a full day for every day that you're virtual, but I think a lot of that still is sort of up in the air until we have further direction from state authorities on what that might look like.
Thanks, Miriam.
Thank you. Here's a question. How many extra hours do we have scheduled into the school year anyway in excess of what our requirement is?
So that actually is in the next agenda item, so if you'll bear with me for just a moment, I'm gonna click into this agenda item. Assuming this were to be approved, we would have 22.15 hours over the minimum of 1,080 without taking away the two professional learning days, one in October, one in February, that are currently still on the schedule. So 22.15, a district, excuse me, a school day, I believe, someone quote me on that, is around six hours, so that gives us about three days over. Again, assuming are approved.
And I guess I would also assume that we wouldn't need to make up the past two weeks or the weeks that we're in because they were approved.
That's correct. That's correct.
Well, without getting too far into the weeds, what's the, what's the possibility of taking PD days? Making them attendance days if we had to?
I think at this point, I'm just gonna speak kind of off the cuff because we have not discussed that. Of course, it would require board approval of the calendar, and again, I don't want to get too far into the next agenda items, but when we looked at the cadence of late starts for professional learning, that we shared we would need to maintain that, that time for teachers and in that collaboration. They're every other week roughly, so at the middle school, they occur every week. At the elementary level, they're every other, so that meant the same group of students, you know, that same rotation, the Monday rotation in the hybrid, we're getting those late starts. So the proposal is actually to move to an every week late start. So with that additional professional learning time, personally, I'm speaking personally here because, again, we have not discussed this as an administrative team, but I would feel better about, you know, potentially giving up that professional learning time if we knew we had that additional professional learning time. It's, it's sort of trading off.
So Catherine, are you ready for some discussion on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I really appreciate all the feedback. I want to thank everyone who given us, who has given us feedback. In all seriousness, it's been to a person thoughtful and considerate and respectful, and I really thank our whole community for sticking up and, and giving their feedback on this. It's been vital to hear firsthand stories of teachers and parents and community members. Thank you to the three speakers tonight, and I would also say, I don't necessarily want to speak for the whole board, but I, I can guess we all wish that we could be in person five days a week face-to-face. It is certainly what we all wish for our children and for your children and everyone. That is obviously such a loss that we're all feeling right now. Personally, for me, I feel like as a district, to protect our community, our students, our teachers, and their families, I would feel most comfortable extending online learning and making the decision next Monday for the entire district together on how we start the year and starting at the same time, understanding that Rolling Green families are hit the hardest by this. But I don't feel like we can safely have students in class this quickly. So that, it would be my, my feeling on this issue would be to extend online learning for an additional two weeks and then vote next Monday on how to start the district as a whole and start at the same time.
I, is that a motion, Judy?
It's not a motion. I wanted to have some discussion first, but I will, I will make a motion for that. But maybe the discussion would change the motion itself, but that's just my, my opinion.
Okay.
I totally agree with what you're saying. Judy, I think that Polk County is not at a safe point to reopen. I think the best thing to do is to stay home and then reevaluate things in two weeks to come back and make the decision for the district as a whole.
I would, I would agree with that as well. Given our positive percentage rates, if you compare those to what the World Health Organization and the CDC have laid out as guidelines for when it's safe to open, we are obviously not in a safe zone, so I would agree that we would wait and have a further discussion, especially when it comes to going into closed session and seeing what our options are legally. And I want to let everyone know, I have, I have a five-and-a-half-year-old who's gonna be starting kindergarten, and I have wanted nothing more than for her to be able to go in person and make friends who are not me personally, and just give her the, the amazing chance to go to school and have teachers that care for her and love her as much as I do. But at the same time, given our percentage rates, I just don't think it's safe, and I want to make sure that we make the right choice for all of our students and our staff.
Agreed. Yeah, thank you.
Rihanna?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm actually wondering if we could hear from some of the leaders of the Return to Learn Plan team. I mean, when I read this, it's telling us that they're recommending the hybrid model. So I know Krista had already mentioned some of that as far as, you know, upholding the law and also being morally responsible. So I think we're just seven people on a board, and these leaders have been working on this plan for two months now. So I think it's, would be very advantageous to us to hear from them as well, and, and their thoughts, and working with the teachers at Rolling Green, and their thoughts with feedback that they've been hearing may be different than what the board has. So I think it's worth hearing from some of our leadership team as well.
I agree. I just want to note that this is a decision that is our responsibility to make, and I would, I don't want to put any. And I would, I don't want to put any of our staff in the position to advocate for something that they would have professional ramifications for it, not at Urbandale, but at large in their community down the road. And so I just want to, from my perspective, protect that from anyone. I think Krista's point about licensure, I am very cognizant of that, and I don't want to put anyone in a bad position. That said, I'd love to hear more feedback. I just wanted to add that caveat.
As well, but I want to say I have had communication with administrators that they feel completely different on a personal level than what's mandated by their job. And I think many of us find ourselves sometimes morally at odds with our jobs, though bearing in mind that our administrators have been put in this horrible position where they may be compelled to do something they are morally opposed to.
If I may jump in, so we are in the process of writing, finalizing some survey questions that will be sent out to families and staff as early as tomorrow. In fact, it's our, that's our plan is to send that out tomorrow. We surveyed our staff and our families back in June. And of course, we all know that a lot has changed in the past month and a half or one month, month or so ago. But on June 28th, when the, when the family survey closed, approximately 75% of our families indicated that they wanted their children back in school. And I think the three options were yes, no matter what, yes, with face masks, yes, but I don't support face masks. So in that time, since that has transpired, of course, like I said, you know, a lot has changed. My own thinking has changed considerably. So we would like to get that feedback from both our staff and our family members so that we have that to bring to you on Monday to give you a better sense of sort of what the overall feeling is about. I know Dana Wilson is on this call and could speak to sort of anecdotally, how's it going at Rolling Green in a remote environment? But that would truly be it, just kind of some anecdotal feelings and responses and feedback that she's heard as their leader. So if I may, I would just invite Dana to speak to kind of how it's going.
Yeah. Hi, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we, um, let me start by saying that the teachers at Rolling Green are unreal. Their flexibility and their ability to adapt and take feedback and make improvements as we've gone. You know, the days when, in my first days there, we were planning for 100% capacity of students and then switched to thinking remote and now hybrid. And really, that's only been four weeks that all of that has happened, and they've just rolled with that. And I think that the, the remote learning is going better than I thought. I think that most people thought it would. There still are certainly improvements to be made. I appreciate Olivia sharing her insight and perspective on that because we, I mean, there are, there, we haven't done this before in this format. And so we certainly have things to improve on. I think what the staff is creating is consistency in a model. It's hard to think about where you put your energy for improvement when we don't know the model that we're going to be in. And so they're trying, everyone is trying to plan and make the best of online and think through improvements while trying to think about how to really safely get students in and out of the building, even if it's through like pickup and drop off. And how do we keep kids separated without, with still allowing teachers to have any planning time at all to really get the things done that need to be, that need to be done? So that's, I mean, that's how it is. It's going well. I think everyone is craving to be with students. But at the, at the same time, are really unsure of how to work through all of those details to really ensure that we can keep kids distanced from each other.
Thank you, Dana.
Yeah, I have to say, everything I've heard, I'm pretty impressed with the Rolling Green teachers and Dana and what they've managed to do. And no matter what happens going forward, I think they'll serve as a model for a lot of the rest of us. So kudos to everyone there.
And Catherine, I think you hit on something there is we are setting a stage right now. And I have remained mostly silent to this point, taking it in. I do have some reticence to not at least looking at the hybrid in a little bit more seriousness and, and going, continuing the remote. And it's not because of fear of thumbing our nose at the governor's orders necessarily. I'm concerned about the kids first and foremost, and I certainly respect that we have to have safety measures in for kids, staff, parents. But I do worry quite a bit about the lack of contact with kids, even if just for a couple of days a week. And some of what we're missing, whether it's, you know, educational nutrition abuse, otherwise, that, that it concerns me. And is there a way, at some point, we're going to have to address whether now or next meeting, if we're going to get kids back in, in a hybrid manner, we're going to have to address these issues as far as how to adequately protect and routes kids can take between classrooms and all of that. And it's a very compressed timeframe, but that's the element that we're in right now. And so I, I understand, and there's obviously some conversations that went on, you know, behind the scenes and, and with everything that went on. But I will voice that I think I'm at a hybrid point right now where I don't think it's wise to send everybody back into the schools at this point. I just, I really worry about kids that we're missing. So that's, that's my two cents on this.
I share those concerns, Mark. My hope is that by laying other keys, we can truly be, be ready and starting as one, and we're not putting these kids out on a limb and these teachers out on a limb. But I guess I just say that to say the concerns are so valid about getting eyes on those kids. And I don't think anyone disagrees with that. And none of these options are good. You know, like we're, we're dealing with a bunch of far less than ideal choices. I guess I'd, go ahead.
I was, I was just going to say, from my, from my perspective, I've been weighing those exact same things, Mark, and trying to figure out how to like get them in a kind of matrix in my brain of things that we can take care of and things that we can't. And I think, I think giving us a few more weeks to try to work through some of those is a good idea. On top of that, there is, there's something to be said for the fact that schools in general have to take care of a lot more things that fall on us other than education. Those are real concerns. And a lot of those things, we worked, we worked to try to do touch bases during the last, end of the last school year. And those are things that we can continue to work on, and we can have discussions of trying to solve those problems, whether it's the food insecurity, whether it's clothing insecurity, whether it is, you know, making sure we have touch bases with our students and all of those other things. I just don't know how, it's hard for me to put that above because there's nothing we can do to stop COVID. Like, once it gets into a building, we have safety mitigation, sure. But we've seen from, there was a school in Georgia that opened up and everyone, there was a giant outbreak. There's been camps where there's giant outbreaks. We've had tons, like, in the test cases, even with mitigation strategies, like, take that, take the three teachers in Arizona. They were alone without students. They wore masks. They did distance everything, and they still all got sick. It's, it's an incredibly infectious thing. And while we can try to tackle food insecurity, no matter how many mitigation strategies we've put in place, it's exceptionally difficult to tackle the virus. And a lot of our elementary schools, the thing that I've been really focused on is that Webster by itself is, is large in its footprint. The other ones are not necessarily. And I don't know how, we really, I'm sorry. It, I don't know how to do enough mitigation. And I think that our staff has been working on it all summer, trying to find ways to make sure we do enough mitigation. And with community spread where it's at, I just don't know how to, we can't just have ones do it in a classroom at a time. I don't know if that makes any sense. It's just trying to weigh those two. And I've been trying so hard to, I think we can fix some of our issues. We can't fix if everyone gets sick and we end up losing a teacher. I just don't know how, we can't fix that.
I want to make the motion because there's a lull in conversation to...
Judy, can I ask Sarah if she wants to weigh in? She's the only one that hasn't actually talked.
Um, yeah, hey, this is Sarah. So my, I agree with all the concerns and the questions and the uncertainty that everyone has expressed. I do think Mark's concerns are really valid about getting eyes on kids. However, I think there's a way that can, that can be done, you know, creatively. And I just don't, for me at this time, just given the continued concerns, and I'm still like highly, you know, nothing feels right. But I know for me, what feels the most right is to move forward online. And I've tried to figure out, you know, health risk versus mental health versus safety of kids. And all of it comes back to, we can't combat any of the other concerns if our, if some, if we have health concerns that get out of control. So I, I mean, I am, I know how I need to move forward, and that is with an online vote. So a vote for online education currently and reviewing that with the rest of the district, you know, at our next meeting, so.
So can I ask a quick question of the other board members here? Is it that we're looking just to move this to the tent to have further conversation on this? Or are we setting this up to try to go online for the 23rd?
My hope is that we're going to have a conversation next Monday. And that way, folk, when we do start school, teachers and families have multiple weeks or at least more than the four days that we're talking now, until they can make plans for starting. And so like, one of my biggest concerns with going to hybrid right now is it's so quick. It's such a quick turnaround. And the fact that we changed the hybrid model, and I'm glad we did, but we changed the hybrid model last Wednesday. So like, that's an even shorter period of time for them to be able to implement something that we just threw at them last week. So like, I don't have a sense, Mark, of how I think we should open up in a few weeks. I do have a sense, though, that having everyone start at the same time and giving folks as much time as possible to plan that is a good move.
And I appreciate you answering, especially in that manner. And that's what my hope is, that we can continue to engage in a conversation on that. We're not, we decided not. I'm, I'm more inclined to support some short-term continuous online model or if we are still looking to address whatever was on Ashley's list. So.
I want to start hybrid. I don't know if we're going to be able to. I really hope we can. But I think that right now, starting hybrid with four days is not a great move. But I'll let the other board member speak. Obviously, I don't have a problem telling everyone what I think.
If you wouldn't mind me just providing a perspective, I thank you so much for all of your concerns because I agree with them. I want my own daughter back in school very badly. Morale is dipping in our house. It's tough. That being said, I, I don't think that there, I want to be able to follow the recommendations and guidance of local health officials. If we're not ready by the 23rd and our infection transmission rates are not sufficient, I, I would be okay with continuing online. But at some point, we have to return to learn in a safe manner, and that will require implementing the hybrid. So do we need to have further conversations? Absolutely. And I don't want you to feel like this is a way to shut it down and start school online. This is about very closely monitoring the situation. I think all of us need to be having very close conversations such as this and staying in close contact and keeping in mind all aspects of the situation. And I do believe that we are all equally invested and will continue to do so.
I also wanted to point out, the, the part that I just keep hoping is that over the last week or so, we've had Urbandale not necessarily give a mask mandate, have a conversation regarding masks within our city. We've had Des Moines have a further conversation about masks, which should hopefully over the next two weeks, lower our positivity rates here in Polk County. And so I'm hoping that as we move closer to the start date for the other schools, we'll see a solid improvement in the community spread, which would make me feel more comfortable opening up in a hybrid model because then we have, I just think we need more time. I wish it didn't come down to that, but I just, I think more time will give us a lot more options.
Yeah, I think as far as maybe having a visit with Miriam to discuss some of the consequences of some of our decisions, which we don't have the full picture at this point, would be valid. I also, you know, there's some conjecture that the infection rate in Polk County will rise by the end of April, I mean, August, an A word, August. And then, and then I think a continued discussion, do we really need to look at starting, you know, some grade levels in the hybrid and see how that goes ultimately? I don't know. There's so many variables out there, and we just don't have extremely good information. But I think, Mark, to your point, a lot of similar concerns. But I do think there's something advantageous about saying the entire system is on a model versus starting Rolling Green on a hybrid, potentially then telling them, okay, this rate is skyrocketing. We're going to go back to virtual. And I think the decision right now is limited to what we can best do for the Rolling Green families and staff and feel that we have, we have very poor options. There is no win on any of this. And so with that, does anyone else, I mean, the other thing that has been brought up to me, Brianna, you might want to speak about locking families into certain options and how that is, because we'll have better information on that, I hope, on the 10th.
Yeah, I guess, I think in response to even time, right? You know, and something even just popped up on my phone while I was sitting in this meeting that, you know, families have until midnight tonight to decide on an online option. So when I went back again and reread the proclamation several times, the actual part that talks about parent voluntary doesn't give timelines, doesn't say that we have to do it with a semester, doesn't say, you know, it actually states that parent voluntary selects remote opportunities from among multiple options provided by the school district. So when I think about that, I think about, well, then do we need to open it up? Because even when I listen to press conferences and reread things, it is a family choice. But we don't want to say, here's your deadline to make that family choice. So even if we decide whether to go hybrid, not go hybrid, whatever the case may be, you know, I think families need to be able to have some sort of short-term you know, I think families need to be able to have some sort of short term decisions, you know? And I'm not saying short term meaning like, oh, I can choose one week and get off another week. But maybe it's, we do a quarter system or every nine weeks and then you, you decide so that you make the decisions that's best for your families. So I'm even thinking with Rolling Green, depending on what we decide tonight, you know, I would prefer to open that back up to families. If they're choosing like they say, I don't want to be in person at all. We've heard from multiple people, you know, through email, via Facebook things. I've seen lots and lots out there. And there's just as many people that want their kids back in school too. So I think that we, you know, and hearing what Mark's saying as well, I have those concerns. We want to give families some choices. I kind of agree that I would be maybe okay with short term, but even short term is going to then say that we're defying you know, the request that we, we did was denied. So we'll go against that and we have to be prepared for those consequences, if you will.
I would like to speak to that if that's okay, or kind of address some of Bree's comments. So we are definitely wanting to be as flexible as we can possibly be. So I know I heard from Carrie that just today received a couple of additional requests from Rolling Green and we're working with those families and going to make sure that we can accommodate those requests. Something that we're prioritizing is, and I'm speaking first specifically to high school students, is trying to make sure that whatever classes high school students signed up for, they can take. And of course, there's going to be some limited exceptions. You know, but we really are trying to minimize those exceptions. I'll give you an example, just today, the AP chemistry teacher reached out to me and said, hey, I can do this online. I can support these kids. They don't have to, you know, they don't have to go virtual because a parent had reached out to her. And I love that and I applaud that. And it kind of speaks to what Catherine was saying about the Rolling Green teachers. Our high school teachers are just as, you know, wanting to be flexible and all of that. We jumped significantly in our online only requests as of about an hour, well, I guess it's seven, it was about two hours ago. We were up to 466 students district wide. So now we're, we're talking about, you know, 12, 13% of our overall student body. So cohorting those students, trying to figure out what classes they're taking together. Every single student at the high school is going to have to be rescheduled and, you know, re-hand scheduled. And then the kids that remain are going to have to, we're going to have to balance those sections so that we can get those down. We have to identify teachers for our K5 in particular and for our 68, where they do take similar courses, where we can cohort them together to offer those online sections. And at the elementary level, we will have teachers that are teaching exclusively online. And depending on where those kids come from that are going online, then there's, you know, again, there's just some scheduling and balancing. So we've talked extensively about moving that deadline back even a week to August 10th. And I think ultimately where we've just landed on is the, the, in order to again guarantee or, or, you know, that kids can take as many of those classes as they can and make decisions about which teaching staff and who's left and what that all means. We really need as many families as possible to hold tight to that August 3rd timeline. The reason for the semester commitment, and you kind of spoke to it, was the, just the, the, the shorter term fluctuations mean rebalancing all of that again. And it's just, it's just tricky and it's complicated. We definitely want to be as flexible as possible and give teachers, excuse me, parents and families as many choices as possible. And we feel, you know, we know that there are surrounding districts that have told their families, you pick all online or you're coming back with us. And so we, you board, to your credit, have, have voted for a hybrid model that hopefully will allow us to have as many students as possible back in the building at some point, you know, when things are a little safer. But truly, if a family does not feel comfortable with their students, you know, being in person, they have to select that remote option. And that's just, I'm just, that's my two cents as a, as an administrator.
Yeah, it's a completely different world at the secondary level. I, I see that now. So. Okay. Judy, are we ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion to extend remote continuous learning for another two, two weeks. And at the August 10th meeting, when we just, I don't know, I think I'm, I would, I would vote to continue remote continuous learning at Rolling Green indefinitely. And on Monday, include their start date in our conversation.
Stacy Anderson, second.
Okay. Mary Beth, can we do a roll call?
The motion is for indefinite.
Yeah, that's what my question is too. I need to.
Because.
Motion.
Yes, because if we just do two weeks, we hit a, right before some previously scheduled P professional development days and it's an awkward start. So next Monday, when we vote, we can vote for a start date for all the schools.
Judy, if I may jump in for just a second, our current permission expires or runs through this Thursday, August 6. Two full weeks would take us through Thursday, August, oh, sorry, I had to look at the calendar, 20th. Friday, the 21st and Monday, the 24th are scheduled days off for Rolling Green so that they can attend BD.
Okay.
And then Tuesday, the 25th would be their first day back after that break. And that's our first day of school.
So it would just be two weeks then?
Correct. And that would put them online or on the same timeline as August 25th.
So.
I'd be more. Lines up.
So if I amend the motion to say extend remote continuous learning for two weeks.
Put the date in there.
Oh, the 25th, August 25th, I'll second that.
I think it would be August 20th.
I think that's what.
Krista, what's the?
Yeah, with PD, got it.
Yep, I think it would be through Thursday, August 20th because Monday, or excuse me, Friday, the 21st and Monday, the 24th would be scheduled days off for Rolling Green.
So I would motion to extend continuous remote learning through Thursday, August 20th.
At Rolling Green.
At Rolling Green.
Okay.
Second.
And I think we can vote on it as amended. I'm not sure what the rules are there.
Yes. Okay, Mary Beth, you want to do a roll call, please?
Yes, Stacy Anderson.
Yes.
Sarah Schmitz.
Yes.
Rihanna Sera Geiser.
Yes.
Mark Smith.
Yes.
Ashley Anderson.
Yes.
Judy Downs.
Yes.
Catherine Hauser. That's unanimous.
Okay. Okay, thanks for wonderful, thoughtful. You look like guys.
So President Hauser, if I may, I'm looking for maybe a consensus of the board then about that. You had made comment about having the extra meeting with Miriam. Would you choose to have one yet this week or have it before, like same day Monday, but prior to next Monday's board meeting? Maybe start at five or something? What would be your wishes?
What works for her?
I should be able to make, I can make something later this week work. I am also available on Monday. So really, whatever works for you guys, and I understand that there's a lot of time pressure here. So I'll make myself available to your schedule.
Could we do after the board meeting next Monday?
We, I would caution you that there's a pretty extensive meeting on Monday. There's quite a bit of stuff in it, I would say, right, Steve?
Yes, ma'am.
And so if we have a discussion like this, and I know I hate to keep obligating people, but it seems to me that if we could have a brief meeting and discuss the ramifications on Thursday, given the extended, that's a regular board meeting, so there's a lot of stuff in there. And then we'll have another discussion like this, so.
Maybe we could move this conversation offline for scheduling. Instead of pick a date right now.
Okay. But we are agreeing that we probably need to have a conversation about the ramifications. Is that accurate? I don't need a roll call, but is that accurate? Anyone object to that?
No, I would prefer a conversation prior to our board meeting.
Okay.
And if it is like immediately prior, I mean, that would just then be one day as adding another day, but.
Okay. I'll send out something separately right after this meeting is over. You can pick what works for you on a doodle. Okay, you can let Miriam know.
Sounds great.
Okay. Okay. So let's go to B.
Hi, again, I'd be happy to speak to this. I, I am alluded to it earlier, but with the Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Friday model for our hybrid, where groups rotate every other Monday, we had also discussed moving late starts to Mondays. This affects our students in grades K through eight. Roughly, our UMS, they have a late start every week. So really, this does not change the total number of late starts for our Urbendale Middle School students because most, if not all, of our district holidays fall on Mondays. This does, however, increase the number of late starts by 14 to the elementary calendar. The rationale was, I know part, you know, desire certainly to maintain professional collaboration and learning time for our teachers. But we all spoke to the desire for consistency for families as well in, in this conversation. That was part of our reasoning for, you know, moving the hybrid to the Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Friday. So I think this bulleted list sort of speaks to that rationale for these additional days. Really, elementary is most impacted. Total hours of instruction does not change for middle school or high school. Approving this calendar as well as leaving in the full day professional learning days where students are not in attendance leaves us 22.15 hours over the minimum amount of instructional time that's required by law. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
That makes sense to me. I would move to approve.
I'm second.
All in favor, well, let's do a roll call.
Hauser?
Yes.
Downs?
Yes.
Ashley Anderson?
Yes.
Sarah Geiser?
Yes.
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Sarah Schmitz?
Yes.
Stacy Anderson?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Okay, great. Now we'll move on to the amended traditional calendar for the entire district.
Essentially same thing. In fact, I just copied the wording from this agenda from the previous over to this one.
Yeah, Mark Smith moved to approve.
Second. Whoever, it's fine.
Sarah, second. Okay, let's do a roll call again.
Hey, Mark Smith?
Yes.
Sarah Schmitz?
Yes.
Sarah Geiser?
Yes.
Stacy Anderson?
Yes.
Judy Downs?
Yes.
Catherine Hauser?
Yes.
Ashley Anderson?
Yes.
Great. Okay, this involves altering that crossing guard agreement with the city. Mary Beth, you want to explain how that's different? You're muted.
After the board approved this on July 13th, it was discovered by the police officer that brought this before us that there had been a math error. And then also there was COVID language that was included in this agreement. So this is just an updated version that's corrected. I, rather than just correcting it, we thought it would be better to bring it before the board again in its entirety. The city of Urbendale is also approving this agreement.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Downs moved to approve.
That's second.
Okay. I think we can all do an I on this one. All approving, I?
I.
I.
Opposed, same sign? Yeah, what was it, $3 or something that was off? Yeah, yeah, okay. Do we have any other matters? Okay, if not, maybe we have a motion to adjourn.
Downs, so move.
Second, Sarah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for a lot of.